Let me set up straight.
Good evening and welcome to the June 17th Gates County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm Jonathan Craddock, acting chair. Joining us this evening is Commissioner Emily Truman, Commissioner Linda Hoffler, Commissioner Brian Rantry, County Manager Scott Sauer, County Attorney Pitt Gowan, and Clerk to the Board Joe Leitha Chestnut. Dr. Althea Riddick is excused. Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Linda Hoffler.
Please stand.
Our purpose, if we come to you tonight, we thank you for the blessings you have bestowed on us individually, on this county as a whole, and on this nation. We also pray that for your wisdom and guidance as we do the county's business, grant us wisdom in the sermon. We also lift up, hopefully, that we can have empathy for others, that we can follow the commandments of our Savior, to be good neighbors and to be kind to each other, and that we could start to lessen the divide of polarization that seems to be in our country at this time. All these things rest in thy name for thy sake. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Okay, before we get started, I've got a request to amend the agenda. Item three, closed session is not needed. So, action requested is to amend the agenda by removing item three.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Ayes have. County manager updates. I'll turn it over to County Manager Scott Sauer.
Thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping items. I have two song sheets this evening that I've left on your desk. The first one says county manager updates, and I've got them numbered so you can follow along, don't have to take quite as many notes. The other is an appendix of handouts, and it's got a map that runs, so I'll be referring back and forth. Again, we will be here in 48 hours for the board's regular meeting. Of course, one of the primary purposes is the public hearing on the proposed budget. But I wanted to remind the board that a lot of work has been taking place since your last meeting to prepare the project ordinance, to consolidate all of the nine projects that roll up into the state appropriation that our legislators brought to the county this past fall. So you will be seeing, and since all the funds are from one source, we have identified all the projects in a single ordinance, so there aren't nine individual ordinances. However, there are nine individual engineering agreements which are in your packet. The other item I have for the board on Wednesday night is a resolution directing the county manager, the county attorney, the clerk to the board to proceed with the items necessary for transferring animal control. And you will also have, and it's in your packet, a draft of an amended animal control ordinance which has a number of edits and highlights that Ms. Chestnut has helped me put together. Item next is actually the first of my two slide shows, if they could pull up. Many of you have toured the water plant, and on a normal, average day, this is what the water plant looks like inside. Clean, tidy, dry. This photo was taken back in April of 2023. The next shot, or slide, and it's difficult to see, but the shot on the left, you can see where we had had a, I'll call it a busted pipe, for lack of a better term. I think it was a failed coupling is what Brad had indicated. But that place was a showered mess, and a dangerous mess, given all of the electronic components. And one of the lessons learned, as it's been identified by Brad, is that we need to have an automatic shut-off switch outside the building instead of having it right inside. But the repair was made. Thank goodness we didn't lose the ability to distribute water. But it was nip and tuck, because if it had extended into the next morning, we could have really had some tricky situations on our hands. And the coupling is the yellow piece that was put in place. And I'd be remiss if I didn't state that we had a lot of help from different folks. And with the risk of adding a name, Dixie Service Company came out with one of their trucks and one of their largest compressors to help us as we worked through this thing. And I think Brad had it all wrapped up sometime just before midnight. That happened to be one of those days I was out of town when I got that call at 5:00, and I could just hear it in Brad's voice that something wasn't right. But anyhow, he did a great job, and his whole crew did. And again, Billy Tuttwiler was involved, Joe Leitha was involved with getting those, but it was definitely a team effort. Well, if you could flip to the next slide, we're going to talk about June 17th today. I was advised that we have a water leak at 361 US 13 North, which is a mobile home park. You can see it's identified as God's Acres. I can't read the rest of it. There is a stick-built dwelling on the property and nine or 10 mobile homes. And the stick-built property had one of our notorious broken water meters. So for years, they were paying the basic rate, and most recently, the $29 a month. Well, last week, I think on Tuesday, the staff installed one of the new meters, and within five days, 2.4 million gallons had flowed through that. It's a tremendous amount of water, and with the drought we're having, it's very serious. But you can imagine the water bill they might have had. So with the concurrence and approval of the property owner, the staff have turned the water valve off and locked it. And then we learned, just a couple of hours later, that the folks that live in the rear of that mobile home park don't have water. So we are working to isolate that situation and try to get it corrected as quick as possible. Billy Tuttwiler has retrieved what we call a water buffalo. It's probably 500 gallons on a trailer, and actually found it through his resources in Currituck County. He's brought that back to Gates. It takes about 24 hours to go through the sterilization process so that that tank is safe for potable water. He and the water department are taking a pallet of bottled water out there this evening. But, you know, in this heat, it's a terrible inconvenience, but with the potential to lose another couple million gallons just in a few days, we had to find some way to mitigate this. So we are working diligently on that and have quite a few local folks that are helping us work through the identification of lines and valves who are more familiar with that property. So, and I think there was just one more slide, and that was simply off of the GIS that shows the tax card information.
So how many people are affected?
We don't know. There were, I think, seven mobile homes on the rear quadrant, and we only had calls from two of the customers. So we're not sure how many folks were living in those individual units. It could be folks were working, you know, possibly, you know, on an alternating shift, you know, in another location. But we'll be working to notify those folks and make sure they've got all the water they need. And if we need to be bringing in ice, we'll do that as well. But that just literally popped up about 3:00 or 2:00 this afternoon, and we're going to do our best to resolve that quickly.
If my calculations are correct, and it is three cent per gallon to treat the water, that water leak in five days would be $72,000 in kilometers. The 350 million gallons of water that we were producing and treating, and only billing for 157 million gallons of it, that's 72,000 miles worth of it right there.
Well, I think we've all known, with an aged system, we've got a number of situations that will continue to pop up until we can address all of them. And thank goodness, we've got some resources to work with through the state.
And we have stockpiled supplies so that we will have them on hand and not have to wait till it's disastrous to occur, correct?
Yes. Well, item next on my list is, we're all ready to number four. The top sheet on the appendix has all of your water projects that the board has either received funding for or granted approval to make applications. And that top line is the 9.8 million for the project ordinance you'll consider Wednesday night. We've got the two assessment grants for the water system and wastewater, the wastewater treatment restoration, the lead line survey, and then the sites below that are the, the projects below are the Buckland School Sewer and the TS Cooper School Sewer. If you flip that long page over, I've got four individual sheets. Each one is for a water line request in a private neighborhood throughout the county where water has just not yet been made available. And the most recent one that's come in in the last few weeks has been Maryland Lane, which is up above Sunbury off of 32. And I think all of these are up in that general area. There's a Scotts Lane, I think the Lilly Lane, I believe, is in Gates.
It is.
And then the Hobbs Lane is, again, I think, close to.
Scott and Hobbs are, they're right there.
Yeah, they're, it's an offshoot. I mean, I don't know which one you would call offshoot, but one of them is, they're Dynas, and then it's kind of split.
Well, as we've tried to explain to citizens when they call in, because usually they're doing their own calculation as to what it's going to take to put down a well versus getting county water, and if the line's not going to come for X number of months, even into years, they've got decisions to make. But I wanted to just make sure the board was aware that we now have four of those. And as we fine-tune the enterprise fund and can minimize the leaks and the loss of potential revenue, I think the board will find itself in a position to take some of these projects on a as-needed basis and fund them locally without having to borrow money or write a grant. So those are the four that we have that are on record at the Public Utilities Department. Item next, and I don't know if I've lost, but I, in your packet, I won't try to, we have received our first bill from Perquimmons County for our consolidated 911, but the first period during February for 20 days. This is our mutual aid coverage, which was really the bare minimum cost-wise. We will get a final invoice through June 30 as we close out the fiscal year, rolling into next year. As I recall, the number under the merger agreement is about $775,000 a year. It is about $80,000 higher than it was last year. And if I didn't make it clear when I presented the budget, our goal was not cost-saving on this, but life-saving, for lack of a better term, to make sure we don't drop calls, we don't miss radio traffic with our first responders, and hopefully, much improved services to those first responders. And so we will be seeing a change in the expenditure level there, but I continue to ask everyone I can and get very positive comments about the work that's occurring with our friends in Perquimmons County. Item next, and if you've not had a chance to talk with a lady named Dr. Althea Riddick lately, she's got her fire back. And one of the things she has quizzed me about in the last week or so is the cab program and the potential utilization of monies that the board has currently set aside. It's about $200,000. And of course, I had to scratch my head and remind myself what this cab stands for. Well, it stands for completing access to broadband. And as we've learned in Gates County, we are about 97% complete in getting fiber on the roads in front of businesses and residents. Well, there was a competitive process that was conducted through the North Carolina Department of Information Technology. And I'm kind of going way out there. I'm not going to mention a name, but when we had our kickoff meeting for the cab scope of work review in a Zoom meeting, we were advised, Scott Pierce and I are your official committee members from the county, that we could not even talk with one another before we have a group meeting on Zoom after opening these proposals, which just doesn't make sense in a local government-public setting. So again, to honor their request, I'm not going to mention the name, but we only received one provider's proposal. They identified just five locations, and those five are on this map, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And I've given you the physical addresses in the lower right-hand corner of that map. And, you know, we've had some fairly, I think, vigorous fieldwork to double-check the maps that have been provided to Gates County. In every single one of these locations, Gates County reviewed, rejected, and actually challenged the state's mapping system. And again, the, I think I can do this by memory, I think on the Savage Road, that was an old farmhouse, but it still has fiber. There's fiber from a provider out near it. The Daniels Road is a cow-feeding station, in the middle of a, a cow-feeding station. Used to be a farmhouse there, but the farmhouse is gone. But again, they're identifying these sites in Gates County and all over North Carolina using AI, artificial intelligence. It's really artificial. And all of these sites, a couple of them are hunt clubs, one of them doesn't even have electricity, it's so far back. I mean, it's just not serviceable. It wouldn't be practical. But in several of the cases, the company that made the proposal is actually paralleling lines that are already installed, that have been installed in this last year, either by one of their competitors or actually by their company. And then you're going to have the same company, just, it makes no sense. And after reviewing this stuff, there's no way, I just couldn't contain myself. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't let y'all know how crazy this is. And again, how they're doing it in the other larger jurisdictions and trying to examine the maps and the locations, and maybe it's not an issue in other places, but it's kind of like the situation we had with the low-hanging wires. Why Gates County was the only place that realized that a 12-foot wire is going to get hung up on a 16-foot combine or harvester. Anyhow, we had to submit a recommendation today at 3:00 in advance of a Zoom meeting Wednesday at 3:00. And the communication that went out from Gates is that we are rejecting these five locations. And we detailed exactly why and indicated that we had, I think it was in February or March, had a Zoom meeting in this room, all of us looking at the map with the folks from Raleigh, and we just shared as sternly and politely as we could that the maps just aren't accurate and don't reflect the situation in our geography here in Gates County.
Where did they get their information from?
Satellites, I think.
See, they showed up as buildings or homes or whatever.
So none of these are residences?
No.
One's a hunt club, one's a hunt cabin, cattle pasture.
And if there's any of this, a house, it's an abandoned house that's just completely not livable.
Yeah.
But y'all have heard reports from our field team, and in fact, our field team went out again today to verify each one of these before we submitted our communication. And all of these sites were on the list of, I think, 230 locations that the county rejected six months ago. So again, it just, our challenges just fell on deaf ears. Just an update. Item next, Gates County Community Center transfer and transition effective July 1. We are moving toward that target. We have a lively, ongoing discussion with the school administrator, the superintendent, and Mr. Harrell with the finance office. We are still working through the accounting. There are a number of, I think, funds that are connected to the community center where folks either pay dues, they pay registration fees for summer camp or for softball, baseball, what have you, but we are working through that. Mr. Rabey, who's with us today, has been integral to that, as have all of his staff, but especially Ms. Connie Wolfrey, am I pronouncing that correctly? Those are the two that we've had to call into Williams' office the most to work through this stuff, but they've been great to help us tie up the loose ends. Couple of things, though, that have been really positive, as we've talked about the equipment in the exercise room that in many ways needs to be replaced because it's obsolete, may not even be safe. Warren Perry, Warren's back here somewhere, has had a couple of, I think, conversations sidebar with Dr. Riddick, who put him in touch with the folks at the OBSC Foundation. And they've, I don't think they've put it on a press release yet, but they've indicated they've got an amount of money that'll help replace. How many machines would you guess, Warren?
Well, one big machine will replace about three or four existing machines, along with some other things included with that, like chemical, and also create more room in the, or fitness and that sort of thing. If you can bring one machine in and take three or four out at the same time. Yeah, it's a big improvement.
And it sounds like the OBSC Foundation will be amenable to other, more formal requests in the very near future for that transition. Likewise, the, I hope I've got the name correct, Gates County Community Foundation has made some funding available so that, one, we can ensure we've got internet connectivity and also a flat-screen television. And with what they've provided, we might be able to get two flat-screen televisions, probably maybe that size, one for each of the two rooms that are used for senior citizens gathering or where we had the employee appreciation dinner last fall. But that's rolling along very well. We hope to, it's a five connection. We hope that'll be done this next week. They came out, we had hoped we'd have it finished by Friday, but they ran into a couple of logistical challenges, but we think we're making progress, correct, Mr. Pierce?
That's Gates County Community Partnership.
Partnership, I'm sorry, thank you.
No problem.
I knew I had it wrong. But that is really good news for us, though. And again, as I mentioned, we're working expeditiously on all the other transitional items. Again, number eight, I mentioned briefly at the beginning, we do have a resolution for next week related to the animal control transition. The amended ordinance was number nine. The Perquimmons Choon Gates Landfill Commission met last week. Commissioner Hoffler chairs that group. They heard a report from the engineers on what it's going to take to rehabilitate a very highly well-used transfer station that needs quite a bit of attention. Due to the engineers' estimates for the cost, they divided it into phases, and it appears the first four phases will address most all of the metal and steel structural-type components, and then most likely come back and look at the concrete floor. The items that they've highlighted in their first four phases are really the issues that the state inspector has been keeping a close eye on and has been warning us that we really need to be attentive to this. So at the time, maybe 60 days or so down the road that we have pricing through the bid process, we'll be coming back with a recommendation for the three-way split of the cost for that. And I am hopeful, and I think Mr. Robinson would confirm, that we think that the solid waste fund should have adequate reserves that the board could use some of that money. And again, if the structural engineer's cost estimates are accurate, the number that he was sharing, split three ways, would be less than $100,000 for each county on those first four structural pieces. Item 11, there's just a lot of paperwork with the closeout of the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency and then the, I don't even remember what the ESRL, Elderly Single Family Rehab Low Income Program, I think is what it is. Programs like this are actually, we call them grants, they're actually a loan. There's a deed to trust placed on the property so that the homeowner will stay in the property for a certain minimum number of years. But circumstances change. Sometimes that homeowner becomes deceased, and then the family members have to work through it, and the amount of the loan or the grant has to be modified so they can change that. I know we've been wearing a path over to Pitt's office with some. I know we've been wearing a path over to Pitt's office with some of this stuff, so again, just so, if you can't find me one day, I'm wrestling with that. Item number 12 is even more fun. The Farmers Farm Service Agency in the USDA building, which is located, I thought I had it written down, I think it's 407 or 107 New Ferry Road.
Last building on the left.
Yeah. The county acquired that land, I've learned, I've learned some history, in 1998 from a law firm in this area. The county then built a metal building, 3,600 square feet. The county's been leasing that building to the federal government since 2001. For a number of years, probably the last 10, they've been submitting a one-page renewal form where the county could just sign off and it would go away. This year, they decided to go through a competitive procurement whereby the property owners had to submit a lease proposal. So Mr. Robertson and I have been working through a manual that's about that thick, and we've gotten some good support from the folks in Raleigh and DC, but we're very close to getting that finished. The county's been leasing that building for over 20 years for about $22,000 a year. And things have changed economically, and we've tried to submit a proposal that is, and it's not a secret, it works out to be about $56,000, and that's not including the utilities that they have to pay, but they also have a series of improvements they would like Gates County to make on the facility. And of course, they required bids, and Crystal Phillips has been working with them, and it came up to about $101,000 with security carpet, paint, hardware on doors, all the sorts of safety devices that you see in a more modern slash urban setting where you just don't know who's going to, you know, walk in. Our strategy is to request that that reimbursement be 100% upfront at the signing of the lease. We're not sure if we will prevail on that, but we're going to try our best to make sure that Gates County is reimbursed and our coffers are reinstated rather than have to build that into a 10-year amortization. So we are moving there. A year ago this time, the Board of Commissioners entered into an agreement with the Board of Commissioners in Hertford County to share our soil and water district technician, Mr. Matthew Lowe. That's been going very, very well. What we have learned is that we were overly detailed in the crafting of our memorandum of understanding and put in too many calculations and this, that, and the other. And working through our friends in the finance office in Hertford and our friend in the Gates County, we are working through a simplification of that process. Our reimbursement will stay the same, but it will be adjusted as both parties make adjustments in their budgets, not based on some formula that your county manager worked up, sorry about that. So anyhow, we are, we are working to scratch that off the list. Number 14, through a constituent citizen meeting, I've had the opportunity to learn about our code enforcement as it relates to the setup of manufactured homes and modulars, be they brand new or purchased pre-owned. And in Gates County, we had been requiring termite contracts, not just an inspection, but actually to have a contract for coverage for service. And the homeowner that contacted me went out of pocket for about $580 for the treatment on the property she was setting up for her mother. Through our communication with the state building code, we have all learned that that is over and above what the state requires, and we will be needing to make a, I'll call it a, I mean, it wasn't a payment to Gates County, but I think making that person whole and covering that cost that was imposed here. And we've already started the process of reviewing our files, going back as far as we have them digitally, which is to 2017. We know we have at least 30 of these properties that we have identified, but we will be working on some outreach in case there are situations we're not aware of. And of course, properties change hands, folks move mobile units on and off the property, so it could be that some of the impacted parties are no longer in Gates County, or possibly they're no longer living or what have you. But for those that we can identify and communicate with, we will be bringing sort of a reimbursement package to the board for consideration to help make these folks whole.
Isn't it that when someone, that some could be affected, they borrowed money to buy this home, that the lender required them to have a termite inspection?
And that very well is the case on stick-built houses a lot, and it could be on these, and I think it would be...
I mean, in fact, we need to ask.
But our procedures had been to require that.
Oh, I understand.
But you're correct. We need to have a sort of a two-way test on that. Well, next on my list was the budget, and I wanted to, if you take your paperclip off that appendix, I've got a short little handout that starts with a seven-year full-time position history. When I presented the budget the other week, I know I mentioned the proposed 5% cost of living, but I didn't spend a lot of time talking about other personnel changes. This budget includes a couple of significant changes in that we no longer have the nine full-time communications employees. Those positions will be eliminated in this budget. And I wanted to point out also, if you look at the column and compare 23 to 24 for 911 Communications, last year, there was a two-position decrease, and that came as the recommendation of Sheriff Campbell, as we were trying to fine-tune this budget and work to operate it as well as we could, he had offered that up. So this was definitely a multi-year process where everybody had a handle on the wheelbarrow as we tried to push it up the hill. But, so we've seen a drop in communications from two years ago, from 11, down to none. Jumping back up to the top category, with all of the project ordinances and payments we'll be making to different vendors and reporting that we have to make to the state on how we're going to spend this $9.8 million, we have proposed a full-time accounting specialist to assist the staff in the finance office to help keep up with that reporting. There's just, when we were working on the budget last year, I don't think any of us could have imagined that the board would be successful securing $10 million. And then there's been a few more, I think, that have come, and just to help us do the most appropriate work to account for those funds, we have requested a full-time position in the finance area. With animal control, there is the addition of a part-time .5 FTE position that will move to county administration. There was no change in any of the part-time staffing positions for the Office of the Sheriff. We have also picked up four full-time positions in the community center. As I mentioned, Mr. Raby is our department head as this moves forward. There are also two part-time positions with the community center that I think have been there a long time, from what I understand. So it's a staff of six, four full-time, two part-time. But net delta change was a decrease from 97 positions down to 94, and I'm always reminded if we don't count cooperative extension, who are not county employees, they're funded through A&amp;T and NC State, but I think are really part of the county family. That's six positions, so we really just have 88 full-time employees that are on the Gates County payroll. The second page is simply my cheat sheet on capital outlay. And it gives you a scorecard of the capital outlay that's been recommended in the budget. And for the first category, that totals $392,100, we are suggesting that that comes, since these are one-time payments from the county's general fund, fund balance. The next category, the $300,000, actually comes, again, from fund balance, but it's your ARPA money that you've already received. It is in the county's accounts, and the funds have been allocated for some emergency services areas. The most significant is the repeater replacements for the, I believe it's the fire department radios. And I'm not going to put Mr. Tuttweiler on the spot because he's been lifting pallets of water for the last two hours, but he has been in close contact with all of our fire departments, and that's one of the areas where we still have some real risk of a breakdown in the communications. And he's made a really strong recommendation that we try to attend to that, in addition to some mobile data terminals. And I think some of these are for ambulances, if I'm not...
It's two more, the ambulance, EMS, and the helicopter, first do fire.
For who?
First do fire.
Okay, first do fire engines. So again, this is money that the board had set aside for use through the ARPA. It's non-recurring money, so it seems appropriate to allocate that for one-time expenditures. And those two items make up the lion's share of your appropriated fund balance. Social Services is next for a vehicle, that's $25,000. The GITS program, again, that is an enterprise fund like your water and sewer program here in Gates County. Ms. Lassiter is suggesting some vehicle replacement, but she's also looking forward to the possibility that when funds can be available to relocate into the county annex facility, adjoining the Board of Elections, and for the transportation system to operate, they have to meet state and federal requirements for security, i.e. fencing, secure automated locking fencing, and also an auxiliary generator. And the thought process at this plan, having no money in my pocket, is still the potential relocation for the JIMs program and the food pantry operation to move into what is the present-day GITS program. And there's going to need to be quite a bit of, a lot of it is cosmetic, but also some upfitting, because there have been any number of really neat suggestions. One is a canopy out front where vehicles could drive through and be under shelter, going in and out of the facility and possibly picking things up, but also revamping the entire interior like they've done in Elizabeth City and create a grocery store-type experience for the client. So a parent can come through with their children and pull things off the shelf instead of being handed a box or a satchel of prepackaged things. So anyhow, that's what's happening there. The next three line items and the remainder of the capital is for the Water and Sewer Utility Fund. Those in the aggregate are $223,000. Out at the water plant, there's the need for some work inside the building plus outside for lights, and I think he would like to get some auxiliary power out there. Also, he'd like to get a couple of these Z-turn mowers, and again, I don't have the breakdown for this, but for example, the trench boxes, when he has crews that have to get into a ditch, they have to have the means to prevent a collapse. And in our sandy soils, that can happen sometimes quicker than in a red clay part of the state. Anyhow, he's really worked hard to identify what he needs. That last item, the $90,000, is the board observed during your tour, we need some safety walkway structures on the elevated portion of that concrete SBR plant. We want to put the fencing around the, some call it the pond, others call it a lagoon, but we very much need to get on that. And also a shed with a small laboratory for his monitoring and testing equipment, along with protecting some of the rolling stock that he has out there. The next sheet, again, a cheat sheet of special appropriations, the largest of which up at the top is the money that the board sets aside to pay for retiree health insurance for your employees that have qualified for that, and you just work your way all the way through.
Is that funded on, is that underfunded at this time? I know sometimes some people think of that as, well, we don't have it right now.
I mean, we are funded for the current year obligations, you know, the projections for...
I know, that's what I want.
The actuarial, it's really interesting. This last year, and it's reflected in our audit, the long-term liability dropped, I think by over a million dollars or close to it. You know, for years, it's been creeping up. I think it was originally 10 years ago, $200,000, then it got up to close to $2 million, then recently it broke $4 million, and then it dropped somewhere in the $3 million range. And those are all estimations based on the demographics of our retirees, male, female, smoker, nonsmoker, age, what have you. And depending on the demographics of those employees, again, a smoker's going to be more expensive to insure than a nonsmoker.
I know we try to keep a track of, like, potential retirees each year, you know, to make sure that we are at least paying it, but maybe stashing a little bit more in it so that some of these years will get hit hard. Because we do have an aging workforce.
And again, it really is a...
Well, some have a number of years in county service. They're not old, but they are...
It's an actuarial exercise. It really gets tough because they're trying to project how long folks are going to live.
I just want us to be prepared, because we need to keep our word.
Based on the most recent trends, we're in much better shape than we thought we were. The last item I have is the... The last item I have is the worksheet that the finance director puts together for me every year, is we try to track our sales tax. And again, last year, when we were looking to try to make some fairly significant adjustments for many employees, including law enforcement, we hit those targets, we exceeded those targets. It looks like we will, for the year we're in now, to get to June thirty, twenty twenty-four, exceed our sales tax projection by two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And I think William feels pretty confident about that, in that the last month that the county received just came in on Friday, I believe. So this is the most current estimate we can provide for the board. And the sales tax that we have budgeted as compared to that estimate is one point four seven percent above that, or a fifty-one thousand dollar increase. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, next year being revaluation is gonna be a whole nother difficult exercise for the board to work through. The state law is set up, we're supposed to hit market value as of January first, for us it'll be twenty twenty-five. They have to be arms-length transactions in order to meet the market test. It can't be the sale of a piece of property from a parent to a child or a grandparent to a grandchild. And the economy's gone crazy with real estate, whether it's what people pay to rent a house or a condo or what they pay for purchasing. And I know Renee McGuinness, when she was here maybe two meetings ago, she referenced a local sale that had a pretty significant gain in eight years. And when we present the budget next year, we have to publicly state and publicize the, what they call the revenue-neutral point, that if we were to bring in no more dollars from the tax levy, what would that rate have to be? So where it is now at eighty-four cents, it would most likely be some number less than that, but to keep pace with everything that's on your plate, you're gonna need to have some discussions. And I know a lot of counties around have had to raise taxes this year. It'd be real easy to say, let's bump it up two or three, but the board took that significant step a couple of years ago to go five cents, and I think to try to push it the year before revaluation just would not be smart for a number of good reasons. And that was really what I had, and I stand ready to try to answer questions or provide other explanations.
Commissions?
Thank you.
I think there's a lot of work been done on this budget. You can tell, a lot of thought been put into it, and decisions made that seem to be prudent measures to take as we go forward, taking care of some of our needs and doing it in a gradual manner and have, you know, I just think it's a well-thought-out document.
I agree. I appreciate the line-by-line explanation of everything. And I think my favorite point on everything that you went over tonight is the fact that you were, you guys, and I mean, we, I guess, are actively working for the community in that issue that came up with inspections and such. I mean, all of this aside, that's who we're here for, is for the community, so...
To be responsible.
To be responsible, so proactive and seeking out things like that. That is, to me, the most important point in all of this tonight.
And it's, you know, we just need to be transparent.
I agree.
And I think people appreciate that. I do.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Sheriff Campbell contacted me early this morning, saying, "Do I need to be here tonight?" Because he's got another commitment this evening. And I said, "Unless there's something we've missed, we think we hit all the targets he was looking for." There are, I think, four more vehicles that will be added to the leasing program, his supplies, his equipment, everything. I think we supported those dollar for dollar. So I promised him no worries. Just, that was just my pride, it's a promise from you all, but I promised no worries, at least not tonight, so.
Commissioner Reitler?
Yes, I want to thank you County Manager Sauer and also Mr. Robertson. It's like a fiscal sound proposal budget that we're gonna have, it's addressing the needs of our departments, and I'm well pleased with it.
Thank you.
The only question I do have, something for y'all to think of, the capital outlay for the vehicle for social services, would that be something that we could possibly lease, or would it benefit us to lease, or not?
It would, except for the fact that we have to submit reimbursements to Raleigh.
Okay.
And that gets real complicated. They typically will pick up close to fifty-five percent of the costs, so I think it's a safe bet to try. But it's a great question that William and I have wrestled with in a couple of weeks.
Good budget. I'm looking at the capital outlays and expenses and the cost that would come out of our fund balance, but I look at it several different ways. It's cost that comes out of our fund balance that we worked hard to get there. And this is a nonprofit organization, but we had to have backups, you know, the rainy day funds, didn't see that coming. But it's also an investment in what we already have, the computers, the equipment that our staff needs to do their job more efficiently. Because Gates County's come, we're stepping up the game, broadband, so you can do more with less, keep the same staff, they can just do something else. You know, more efficient. Good budget, thank you for all the time y'all spent on it. I know it's been gruesome at times, a lot of thought, long-range forecasting, I get it, but a good budget, enjoy it. If y'all see any more questions or things you want clarity on after tonight, please reach out to...
Yeah, please come by.
To County Manager, Mr. Williams. Other than that?
I'm not just trying, I'm not trying to destroy the microphone, I'm sorry.
Other than that, does any other commissions have any questions?
No, the budget, just another thank you to Mr. Tutwiler and Mr. Arnold, who's not here for their work over the past couple of weeks, because I will say, my heart dropped a little when Ms. Joe called.
That could have been bad in so many ways.
But I think the community was well-informed and everything was upfront and put out there, and I think that it was handled very well and very quickly, which was very nice from where we started.
Anything else?
No, sir.
I request a motion to adjourn.
Does it move?
Second.
Properly moved in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. We adjourned.
Was this the one I was reading from?
I'm sure, I think so, you have some notes on that.
Okay, let me check this report. Sometimes I don't quite get my ducks in the rook.